All right. We'll call this the workshop order this evening. Before we do get started, for those who may be watching via, I think, way of YouTube, there you scroll down, there will be a place if you have questions you want to ask, there's a way that you can email questions. I understand that you'll get answers back maybe in a day or two on those. And also, there's something else. What was it?
There's links to our reopening.
Okay, now, if you scroll on down, also, you have a link to our page where helping out the reopening of our schools for those who are watching this today. Okay. Let the record show that all more members are present. Superintendent, the attorneys here, our attorney, would stand and prepare a pledge from this act.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for this gorgeous day that you've given us. We just pray that as we come tonight, that we will be in your will in everything that we do. For we want to do what's best for these children, for these teachers, and all people involved. For to give us the wisdom and the knowledge to answer all the questions and calm the fears that everyone has. For we just trust you and praise you for all things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
Before we adopt the agenda, which is the workshop this evening, we have a, we've had a emergency item to be brought to our attention that we need to take care of, so we need to amend the agenda on these things, trying to get schools sorted back, trying to be ready. You know this request here, and had this to be able to purchase a hundred hotspots for the case we need for our students, and that needs to be done tonight, so that we can consider amending.
I'll make a motion.
Just make that motion. Is Mathis Secondson all in favor, say aye?
That was for me.
So, Carrie, and we'll take care of that item before we move into our workshop. And this is an item that the purchase order, or from our director of instruction, Shannon Karen Hackoff, the approval of purchase of a hundred Horizon hotspots to be given to students without internet access in the event of distant learning during the COVID crisis. But this funding is coming from our Cares Extra grant, so it's about $37,000 to $38,000. But this is something we need to amend upon tonight. So, what's the gear for the whole?
Um.
All right, so, is there any other next motion? It's Agnes Secondson. Any other discussion?
One question. Maybe that would have been one of the ones that we could have used, coming from some of the, they were FDEM money, you know, that they said that would replace this. I know that was for cleaning supplies and protective equipment and all, but couldn't we have used maybe that money, like for that, that were reimbursed about 85%?
From my understanding, what actually what we had done, if we wanted to do that, was that we were had to take it out of general and then kind of keep the fingers across that thing of whatever reimbursed, it would be possibly a year before you got that back. So, there were some categories that, I'm just kind of speaking, we're actually here to, that they just thought it was better just to be able to take this out of Cares money, so we made sure we got it done and we have the funding to take care of.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, I got a question. Are we automizing, are we spending the Cares money? Are we keeping a detail list and a record of what?
Yeah, because we will be, we are, we will be audited now, and we're getting audited on this very, very closely.
Okay. As we're doing this, I would like to request that the board stay up to date as much as possible with the funding, so we can see where we at as well.
Yeah, we asked for that a couple of meetings ago, and I know y'all have been short-telling the when, but when you did get some of them drafted, it would be great for us to kind of know.
I want to say here, the grant that you asked me the meeting before, Sharon had that in that packet that what she sent out to the nation.
Yes.
So, that was kind of overall, where was the standard? As they make adjustments, we can get that for you.
Thank you.
Hey, this message?
Danny, how many hotspots are we going to need in the district? I know we've done several surveys, and I know that a hundred is probably not enough. So, do you have an idea of how many we're going to end up needing?
I wish I did. I mean, we just don't know. That's my question, on the actual survey now, with a student's name, so we can, you know, look at that a lot, a lot better. Like, from my question we had today was, one family called, has nine children in their house. So, was that nine hotspots, or so, I think we're going to be able to work that, I'd say that I only need two hotspots in that area, so there's still some questions on that we'll have to find out. Do those hotspots aren't configured to that computer? So, from my understanding, you just won't be able to take this hotspot anywhere and use it on any computer, it's only linked to your school computer?
Okay. All right, no dispute made. Can you say anything? I'm in favor for this, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so, Carrie. And this moves us into our workshop, reopening schools for the 2021 school year, and this is overall, and it's over to you.
Shannon, is there any more I can talk here? I don't have a paper. You have the paper?
Yeah.
So, I gave you a couple of handouts here before we get started with how we made this point, and we all know how we made this point, but some recommendations that we have and we have looked at. As we develop the task force we talked about, we total have four of these. I really appreciate the Health Department, they have been amazing right there with us. Kate and Martine, I know we're calling you daily, but I'm sure when our name, our number pops up in your life, gracious to them again. So, a big shout out to them as well, and of course, Kristi is always there for us, emergency management for anything that we need. Want to let you know that this is a moving target. Everything we talk about could change before the actual start date of school. There was one item in here that we had talked about, we even talked about today in our staff meeting, and Kate, Kate called me right before the meeting, and she'll talk about that just a second. That's changed information she just received today. Like I said, it's a moving target, we're going to have to be flexible. We will evaluate this plan every couple of weeks, because, you know, there may be times when we can relax a little bit on it, or there may be times where we have to even get tougher on this plan. The one thing we want parents to know, if they do not feel comfortable coming back to brick and mortar school, we are fine with that. We don't want to pressure anybody to kind of come into a situation where they don't feel comfortable. That's why we're offering our tech program, Taylor eLearning Canvas. You know, one thing we'll talk about too, you'll figure out, there's kind of two, we need to move, volume, okay. We need, there's two aspects to this. There's the health and safety side that we'll talk about, and then there's the academic side of it as well. So, we're kind of breaking it down into two pillars. So, and I'm going to just look at it as a, as a big, a big spectrum. You know, there's brick and mortar here, and there's our tech program, eLearning here, and then there's that mid the middle. So, what we'll talk about is, if you have parents on this end, and we have some that's called us, these are the parents who, you know, I don't feel, I don't want my child to wear a mask, I don't feel comfortable. I don't want my kid locked down in a classroom 24/7. I want them to still a child, they still need to move around. Yes, I want you to keep them safe, but they're a little bit more lenient on things. You got the parent at this end of the spectrum, that my kid's not coming back, I've got help, you know, family that's got health problems, health issues, I can't chance it. They're on that end of the spectrum, and that's fine. That's where they have the tech, the tech option. Then there's those in the middle, that if you, you can go either way, you can go to brick and mortar, or you can go to tech, or I want my child to go to school, but I'm worried about their safety, and I want him to wear a mask. That is totally fine. We will support that. They want to wear a mask, so we're trying to make that spectrum that takes care of everybody, so everybody feel, can feel comfortable coming back to the situation that they want to. But I did give you a returning to school handout, this is posted on our website also. This is just like a really brief overview of what we're looking at doing. There's also some statistics in there about.
I don't think they own that.
Oh, okay.
It's on your email.
Yeah. So, I'll get some more copies in a minute and hand this out, or, here, Jeanne, if you want to pass that around, I thought I made some copies.
And you can give me a copy, please.
And I'll read it if you, if you want to. So, return to school, what you need to know, the Taylor County School District believes in strength and resilience of our nation, state, and county. We believe that students, the parents, along with the community must resume the new school year with as much normalcy as possible as we learn to live with coronavirus world. While for students, families, community, and the school district, must move forward as education of our citizens of tomorrow is paramount importance in our ability for us to thrive as community. This informational bulletin is being provided so that all stakeholders know and understand how we, as a school district, plan to conquer our challenges and make the 2021 school year a meaningful and positive experience. All school district facilities and transportation vehicles have been sanitized and will be sanitized again before faculty and staff return for the first day. If you or anyone in your family has been exposed to or tested positive for COVID, please contact your school health clinic, institute a licensed health professional, discuss your particular circumstances prior to the first day at school on August 13th. That's the other thing we want to emphasize. If you have any questions, concerns, advice, whatever, call your, the site administrator of that school. Please go to them and find that information out. I think that will clear a lot of, a lot of confusion. Also, look at the videos that we have posted. I'm sure we have missed something. If we have missed it, send that link that we have up on our district website if you have questions. With COVID, information and guidance changing constantly. Many options exist on the topic of prevention related to COVID. Screening questions and temperature checks for school age children have proven at this point not to be good indicators of whether or not a student is COVID positive or has been exposed to COVID. Screening questions are dependent on the timing of the questions related to the incubation period. Many children do not have symptoms beyond that of what I presented, what I'm calling. As a reminder, it is recommended that parents communicate with their child's doctor to make sure that he or she is up to date with recommended required vaccinations for school and overall good health prevention. Then it's got some just additional information. This special return to school bulletin has been produced utilizing information available at the time of the publication. Statistics quoted are taken from the CDC. Medical advice is not inferred or implied through this publication, please consult with your physician. Remember to contact your child's school with your concerns or questions. Keep social, hot, or rumor from running your positive mental health. Get the facts, let us know of your concerns. For information related to pretty much anything going on, look at our website, Facebook pages, call the main offices of your school. So, that's the front page. On the next page, it says, once the school year begins, prevention of illness, you know, regular hand washing upon entering school and during periods of school, transition from one location to the next will be topped with stress. I can tell you from my kids in summer school, that's definitely going home, because they are coming home, washing their hands, talking about washing their hand, using sanitizer, and showing us the six foot, some little saying they got to make sure they're staying six foot. But we're going to have the next one, hand sanitizer stations will be available in high traffic areas such as gymnasium, cafeterias, auditorium, media centers, and outside playgrounds. So, we'll have all of that out. Signs to include reminders for good prevention of illness and overall wellness will be posted and sanitized across all departments and schools. Students should not share items such as hygiene items, school supplies, or food and drinks. School buildings will continue to be cleaned daily. High traffic areas will be cleaned throughout the day, as student occupancy dictates that. School buses and seats will be cleaned prior each morning pickup and before afternoon routes for drop off. After each run, even if they have to do a multiple run, those buses will have to be locked down and cleaned before the next group of students can get on there. Restrooms, sinks, closets, door handles, desktops, cafeteria lines, railings, and tables will be cleaned at any reach frequency, and student sitting all venues will be distanced as space, space allows. Once the school year begins, prevention in response to illness. Should a child, faculty, or staff member exhibit signs or symptoms of COVID, the individual should report these concerns to the school nurse immediately for initial evaluation. We will have a sick side and a well side in the clinic, or a side that if we think someone's had the signs of COVID, they will be sent to a different area, so they're not exposed to all the joy within the clinic. If the individual is bound to test positive for COVID, the local Health Department, in conjunction with the Florida Department of Health, will assist the school district in implementing the proper steps to prevent further exposure or transmission of COVID. An infected COVID positive individual will not be able to return to school or work until cleared by the Department of Health with a note reflecting the date of allowed return. A doctor's note will not be acceptable. The Health Department has told us, it has to be a letter from them, and I forward you the email of the, the example of what they shared with us. For the health, safety, and welfare of all individuals, this requirement cannot be waived. Student's absence is a little bit excused for the duration time reflected on this doctor's note. We all know that attendance this year, we're going to have to be relaxed, we're going to have to work around attendance. That could be something that's going to, we'll evaluate as we go, but we, we're firmly aware of that. Students with any illness that exhibits a fever must remain at home and will not be allowed to return to school until a fever, until they're fever free without medication for 24 hours. Thank Kate, just got information on that, that's going to have to be changed. There'll be three days?
They also want them evaluated by a physician, because that is one of the foremost symptoms of COVID.
Okay, so that will have to.
Be a doctor's note.
So, we'll accept a doctor's note for that?
Do you have a doctor on, at the Health Department that could help us with this?
Yes.
I'm the best, and it's he can teach.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you'll, you'll have to be updating this letter then, like the three days of.
Let me ask you this question, Danny. We just, what you mainly read was protocol in general, but we did speak specifically to students. Is there going to be a certain number, a test that has to be negative, or is it just a three day plan, it's not for you?
Danny?
For what?
For a student which has, if a student is wearing a fever, are you saying that it just needs to be three days and the client from their pediatrician? So, it won't have to be no protocol where they need to have two negative tests or anything like that or no?
I mean, I mean, we are still dealing with like flu and strep and other illnesses that can cause fever, so we would leave that up to the primary, their pediatrician to determine, you know, whether or not they need to be tested for COVID, or, you know, run a flu or strep panel or something like that.
Now, would that be the same protocol part as our staff? Will, will it be that the staff just need to go to the doctor, or whatever clearance the doctor give, or is it going to be, they need to have a test?
Well, we had talked about earlier, like right before this meeting was, we were going to go to the same requirements, 24 hours free, this three day, just a prayer about this. That'll have to be a follow-up conversation with Katie, to talk with her about that, to get some, you know, we'll just have to talk about that, but, I mean, if that's the recommendations, that may be what we have to go with. But that's got to be some, that's a good question, because we thought we had that figured out, and now that's new information, so we're going to have to look at.
Yeah, because I was speaking with someone, and they were saying that they, something about they have to do a two test clearance.
And that's if they test positive, for, that's only if they test positive.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, if they test positive, that would be protocol we're following.
There's two ways that they can be released from monitoring. There's a test base, which is the two who put negative results, and then there's also a symptom-based strategy that we can use to release. So, that will be at the discretion of whatever you decide for how you would like us to release.
Those can be the test basis.
There are going to be a test. Now, I do want to say, keep in mind, people can test positive for longer than the period that they are considered infectious. So, that's, that's one thing to consider. They can still be released from, I guess, being monitored, isolated, and still continue to test positive without being considered infectious.
Okay. What do you have to say about the new news going around that 60,000 cases have, that were not handled properly? That we, for those people in Texas that were handling for Florida, and there was another 60,000 that were not being handled properly? You know, that's, are y'all going to the Texas clinic? Have you changed venue where you did your testing done? Has anything come down on that to y'all?
We don't use a lab out of, heard the Health Department does not use a lab out of Texas.
Okay.
Our drive-through lab goes to New Jer, New Jersey, Virginia, somewhere up in that kind of area, and then our state lab, on Southern, Jacksonville.
And is my understanding that these tests have to be stayed cold, or?
It depends on the lab. So, the ones that we send to our commercial lab, which is the ones that are just through the drive-through, they do not have this label.
So, my question is, when, if we have a problem, and we have, we have people that need to be tested, how quickly will we know that we have a problem?
It depends on the lab that they use and what their, who their provider uses. I mean, there's really not, I wish there was a cut and dry, like, we'll know within 24 hours, but there's just not. You know, the art commercial lab that we've used, we've seen everything from results in two to three days to up to seven, eight days. It just depends on the week that the lab is having. So, it's.
Can I, can we, because I know they're having a hard time here, so can we, and just a minute, we'll let them go to the microphone, so that way everybody can hear. Is that okay?
Sure. Do they, do they need to go now?
Y'all want me to get through the presentation, that way we might answer some questions you might have, and then.
My apologies, I was just trying to ask that one question while I was reading. Like, I said, you were, I know. Because I was playing it off for a long time.
It talks about faculty, staff, and students may wear a mask that is self-provided, and we will highly, you know, we highly encourage that. We, we have masks, we have extra, we're ordering face shields, we're, we're those for staff, but it's up to the student to wear the mask. Like I said, we will, it's highly encouraged, but they don't, but they don't have to. We do ask, especially at 612, and K5 may tweak this some, but 612, they're asking masks are to be solid color and not be a bandana, or bandana like mask. So, schools are still kind of interpreting that on the home a little bit. Good overall hygiene and illness prevention will continue to be stressed at school. Please stress this is, this importance at home as well. Daily temperature checks of all individuals will not be done at this, this time, it's not, it is not a recommended practice due to the many reasons a fever may exist. It is also not a good predictor of COVID presence in children. However, staff members will be checked daily. So, we will be checking, staff member, everybody that comes into the school, we will be checking their, their temperature, and not students unless they go to the clinic or they're feeling, you know, they feel like they have, have a fever.
This is not a question, this is just a statement. And you know, when I'm a pre-K to sixth grader, fifth grader, I know when I wear a mask, I'm constantly doing this, constantly pulling here, and I know that a kid is going to do even worse than that, so that's a lot of reasons I don't wear one, because I keep my hands on my face when I do. But, you know, they're going to take on the drop off.
And other people are all over on both sides of the mask, but, you know, for a kid, I know we were, that had been up too, too long ago when we were out of town, and they would not, and that city would not allow kids to wear masks. We wore masks, but the children were not allowed to because of respiratory issues. That was their decision, and so, I know, like, my child came home the other day from summer school and said, such had, had a mask on, it was all over the floor, he was stepping on it, kicking, and then, you know, he's putting it back on, on his face. So, I know there's that on both sides, but I think that's just the choice of the parent, how, you know, that, that could change, where, you know, so, I'm just saying, recommendations that could change on the mask, because I know a lot of people are on both sides of the, of the mask. So, next, we have a PowerPoint, give us a, control. So, you know, just some, just some information there. On June 11th, Governor DeSantis announced reopening, the reopening plan for, for schools. A couple of things in there was close the achievement gaps and creating safe spacing for learning. On July 6th, Commissioner Corcoran put an executive order out that schools would be reopened. So, you know, the question is, not open, whatever, whether we, whether we choose to or not, it is, there's an order that we will be, we will be opened. So, here's, you know, sort of our primary purpose to remain the same. We want to make sure we prepare students opportunities in a certain world. We want to make sure that we support the health and wellness of staff, students, and families. Give students routine, the structures that provide stability, predictability, and purpose. You know, there's got to be new, new methods have been developed that will assist our students and staff in continued academic achievement during this pandemic. One thing to think about there, a lot of people have asked, if you want to go the tech route, like I said, that's fine, if you want to go to that route, we're going to support you. But the one thing we want to emphasize, that is very, very, very different from what we had in the springtime. There will be no packets, there's requirements in this executive order where we have to take daily attendance, we have to make sure the student is logging on and see that student, and also, there has to be progress monitoring, and we have to report that progress monitoring to the state. So, this is not just, like, it was in the spring, we did the best we could, this is different now. This is very, very, not very strange, but it's going to reflect what's going on in, in the classroom.
Would it be a certain required amount of springtime, like the same field has to be done, but what's different?
They're supposed to, I think the way, it's supposed to have the same amount of instruction time, but that's going to vary, that's going to vary by assignments and how quick the student, you know, it's, it's just going to vary. I mean, there's no way you can be exact, you know, exact time on that.
But Danny, this plan has to be submitted by July the 31st?
Yes, ma'am.
So, when will the board actually have it take action on?
I hope that meeting, let me get my dates up, we have two more meetings in July, right? Definitely, if it's not, I don't know if they'll be ready by next, next Tuesday, but the following Tuesday for sure. We'll, we'll have that to you, to you guys. There is an action, we want to make sure we're reopening schools safely. So, what we've tried to do is take our schools and break them down into different parts. Transportation, food service, sanitation, our cleaning. I know in the beginning, y'all would, I'll have the list right in front of me. Here, this, school health, transportation, serving meals, school safety and security, mental and emotional wellness, school sanitation. So, those are areas we tried to break down and focus on to make sure we were covering what we needed to cover in, in every area. And I'll go over that a little bit more when we go over the, the questions here, just a minute. Our community really depends on our school reopening. You know, I've been writing, as I've been out and about, I'm seeing a lot of kids getting out a lot, and some, sometimes, some probably times I wish they were there, whatnot. I know our students need to be back in school, there needs to be some consistency, you know, school's got to take place, we got to do it safely, we've got to get kids back into a routine. We realize emotionally, we're going to have a lot of emotional, mental health issues when these kids come back, a lot. So, we've been trying to prepare with some more guidance counselors this year, more mental health being on campuses. I know Mr. P D talked to me the other day, I think he was getting with you about what he was trying to do with more mental health. So, we realize that is going to be, that is going to be a struggle, not only with COVID and we had with GP going on. So, families are going through a lot in our community right now. So, we want to, we don't want to add to that stress, we want to try to.
We are contracting with. We are contracting with another person that'll be in the schools for days a week, seven additional classes.
Again, we talked about the step-by-step approach and I'll go through those more in just, uh, a few minutes when we go over the Q and As. You know, for success, we want to keep our entire education family safe, safe and healthy. We do have to take in mind also our staff's, uh, emotional health, because they have been through a lot. This is very different, it's new for all of us. I'll, I'll also say this, we're probably having to make some decisions that we normally would not make or maybe we not totally 100% that we like the direction we're having to go. But if we go, if we start for six weeks and heaven forbid, nine weeks, two months, we have to shut down for whatever reason, we have to make these decisions so those kids can leave our brick and mortar classroom one day, go home, and keep school going. Okay? So I just want to let you know, we're doing this decision with how we're doing e-learning and Canvas and global, uh, FLD is for the best interest of, of our students. And we know that's trying, um, on, on everybody across the staff. We realize that. We're not saying that's the best, it's the best option we have for our, for our children right now. And it's the best one that we know of in, in uncharted territories. We need to install confidence in our community to return to school, our campus safely and ready to succeed. We want to focus on student-centered outcomes. We realize also our students are coming back, they're nine weeks behind. Yes, they had, um, school last spring, but it's hard to make up for that face-to-face instruction. You know, our, our middle and high schoolers did pretty well, you know, they can, digital learning for them is pretty good. It's hard to get that kindergarten or first grade student, you know, especially with working parents or with their grandparents. If, if that was a struggle for a lot of families. Uh, I know, uh, everybody's different. We had three we were working with and it was a struggle, we realized first, firsthand. You know, elevating educators and equipping them for success, that's one thing. And I appreciate, uh, Katie's input. We were looking at our calendar, you know, they felt like we needed more days, we felt like we needed more days. That's why next meeting we'll be coming to you, asking you to start school on August, August 13th. We would always say we would love to have more time. I've got some emails today that wish we had more time. When you look at the amount of minutes we have, when you look at the calendar, uh, when you look at the contract and the amount of days we have, we have pushed school back as far as that we, we can, we can go without asking people to come to work and volunteer. And we know that we don't want, we don't want to do, do that. So, you know, people, so with us starting on August the 13th, we have a hurricane day, eclipse day, snow day, whatever day it is that we've had in the past, we will have to make that, make that up on the, on the back end. But just know, we're not able to put any more days in there the way the calendar is set up. We're, are, we're pretty much kind of hand-tied, you know, on that. Leon County is starting, starting a week later. But when I've heard, they've moved everything back a, a week later. You know, if we move the school back another week later and continue to have teachers come on, that, that means we would have to, we still have to do the same amount of days, you know, that's required by minutes. But now we would have to find five more days to pay everybody. You know, on the 30, 20 nights, we're having everybody come in for some training. About one day share instead, just for one day, the entire district's cost is like $95,000. Everybody to come in that one day. So if you try to tackle four or five more days, it's just not going to be feasible for us to, to do that. Um, and I'm going to go over those, these Q and As in just a second. The key stages of the day, we talked about earlier. Obviously, before students arrive on campus, schools are looking at that, how they're, how they're tweaking their schedules around that. When students move out campus during the day, when students utilize classroom space, extracurricular activities. We know that's a big one right now. Uh, FHSA, I think, is having a meeting next week, either later this week or next week. And so we'll get some more guidance on extracurricular activities. And then also at the very end of the day with students and staff, staff meeting. Here's some important days, um, that we have coming up to remember. We're asking by July 17th, that letter of intent must be completed on the website. A lot of people would, you know, have a lot of questions about brick and mortar. Well, brick and mortar will pretty much look the same except academically, except for the physical and safety side of it. But academically, that will may, remain a lot of the same. There's still a lot of questions around our tech program side, side of things. We cannot answer a lot of those questions until we know our numbers. Our numbers is what's going to drive how we're, how we're set up. If we only have five or 10 kids per grade, that's easy, that's smooth. We've got that covered, we'll be able to go through that, we'll be fine. We have 200 kids, or we don't have 200 kids in most grades. Let's say we have 60, 70, 80, 90 kids per grade. Now, that's going to be where we're, we're going to have to alter schedules. I mean, you're a big, big difference. Um, that makes a huge difference in how teachers are going to carry out this, this curriculum. So until, it's hard for us to really set sail where we're wanting to go until we got to get those numbers. That's why it's very important for parents to go on and complete, uh, this survey. Now, if you don't have internet or you don't have access, it's fine, call the school. Schools are, will complete that with you right then, they will help you. Uh, by Friday, if we don't have those complete, schools will start calling parents, asking them, what are you thinking about, what are you looking at doing? One question we, that we have been asked over and over is, you know, some schools are saying, you got to be enrolled one way for a semester, some are saying nine weeks, some are saying six weeks. And we've been back and forth trying to hash that out. You know, when we get in here with the leadership team, there's some of us who on this side of it, there's some of us on this side. So it's trying to figure out, what are we going to do? What we came up with today, that we talked out, was that we would give a grace, a grace period till, I think we said, uh, was it August 31st, uh, so you could pick brick and mortar or the tech. We give you a grace period where you could, you know, if you pick brick and mortar and then you feel like you want to go tech or you have a couple of weeks of tech, then you want to come back to brick and mortar, well, that's fine, we'll let you do that. After that third week, wherever you're at, that's where you're going to have to stay for the remainder of that nine weeks. And that's because to take care of our teachers, kids not going back and forth and, you know, not, that just puts us in stability. Now, I'm a, I'm a student in Katie's class, unfortunately, Lord forbid, I get, I get COVID and now I can't come to school for two weeks. That doesn't mean that we're not going to send your work home, that we're not going to help you. Our plan is they, we would transition you over to the tech program so that way you could continue your work while you're, while you're at, at home. Now, the high school is very different. Okay, A, we said, you know, three weeks grace period, and then we'll give you from week three to week nine, um, we're locking, we're locking you, locking you in, and then we'll let you change after that. High school cannot, because of the way their credits, the way the classes are set up, after that three-week grace period is up, you have to be locked into, into that semester. Um, and that's because that's also for the benefit of a student. You know, if they do half of something and then come back, the way their credits not fall, Mr. Coy was talking to us, it's not, you know, we all say high school beats a whole different drum. It's totally different at high school because of credit, so it's going to be totally different for high school.
Danny, so that means that in the, uh, the other classes now, if they're in brick and mortar, the teacher is the same as if they were in, um, the tech also, that they, does it call back the?
Not necessarily, it's going to depend on numbers. You know, there's two different scenarios. We could say that, let's say that you two are team teaching, you're teaching reading and you're teaching math. One scenario is, if there was enough, you'll teach virtual reading the first part of the day, you'll teach face-to-face math the first part of the day, then you would switch. I, I did say you had virtual classes, right? You would have virtual, you have face-to-face, then you would switch. So you would have the tech kids in the afternoon, now you have the phys, physical kids in, in the morning. That's an option. Other option is, you know, you may be, you could be assigned to teaching tech all day, all day long, um, depending on that. So if I'm in a classroom and I get COVID, you know, if, if the numbers are high enough or low enough, it may be where, yeah, I could stay with Ms. Letcher's class and she could just do the e-learning for me for two weeks on the Canvas. Or it may be, you know, we're going to transition you over here to this online teacher's class because you should be mirror instruction, you should be pretty close, you know. Teacher styles are going to vary a little bit, that's, that's just part of it. But you would just transition over to the other teachers for that 14 days. And then when it's up and you say to come back, you would go back to Ms., Ms. Letcher. So, again, it's going to depend on the numbers, as, as to where you go. Um, we, what we don't want is to overload that, that, that teacher. Or it could be, you know, you just float, if I'm still in your class, I just float to the, to the tech class. Just move me over to the tech class.
And are, is there a, you've got a large database keeping up with all the students and where they're going to be and when they start? And, I mean, you're, you're going to keep up with all this data, a good database?
Schools are, um, as Ms. Bill, she started her master list. So yes, as they're getting the names in, they're going on their master list. Uh, because that's going to affect, I mean, that's going to affect the whole entire schedule.
Yeah, I'd like to see the percentage of the participation on July 17th. So how many people in the county have actually filled out there? I would like to know that number because us in the community, we really need to promote them getting that done. And if we know where we are with it, we could reach out. And I, I know we probably are, but a lot of people I saw on Facebook today said, how do I register my child? I'm thinking.
Yeah, and that's a big question, call the state, call our homeschool.
Yeah, and everybody answers for, for us. I mean, they all, all of a sudden start to write.
And that's something too, Mr. Thompson was going to put out, um, later, because a lot have been calling here that refer those back to the, back to the school, because they're the ones that need it. I mean, really, when you're going, when you're going tech, it's pretty much you're, you're just like being in that seat, except you're in a seat at your home, doing it home, um, your, your computer. So you're still part of that school. Also, can I still participate in extracurricular activities if I go to tech? Yes, you can, you still can participate, um, in that as well.
Well, a lot of parents are not understanding that they need to do the survey. A lot of parents are thinking, because they did what we asked them to do a few weeks ago, that they already, you know, accounted their kids. So I know I had to talk to a few and tell them that, you know, that what you did a few weeks ago was just updating information. But now we need to know how you choosing to send your kid back. So I think we need to make sure that if we could, you know, like, like I said, put it more out there that we really need their input on that survey. Some thinking they've already made a decision.
Right. You have to remind them that, that first survey, we had no name, there was no way to track who completed that. That's why we need the student's name. I do give credit to everybody that, um, Alicia, Connie, Jack, Sherri, everybody Sherri have completed that, because I was thinking, well, I got three kids, I'm going to have to do this three times. Uh, they've got to set up, you can put all your kids on there, you only got to do one survey with everybody on there.
You know, are we doing like a resume call to remind them?
We have it, and that's a good reminder if we need to, to do that.
I thought we were getting a text and a call, I know I got a text and I got a call.
We did a couple of weeks ago, we did, um.
I just got one last week.
Well, Mr. Thompson may have sent.
Yeah, I was going to say, I got a call in saying that, um, I got a call last week.
Was it to complete the survey?
It was just saying that we was doing a reopening and that we wanted to make sure that parents is, um, paying attention to the website and knowing that we are, you know, in the phase of reopening.
We need to say, you got to register, but if you don't point blank, say why you're.
We do, we, you're absolutely right, we, we do need to.
Here's where you go, yeah.
Again, everything, again, thank the, um, Department for, for helping us with, with that. So now we'll go to the, um, the Q and A part, and I think this will answer a lot of questions, um, a lot of people have. So this is kind of the, the school health. You know, we talked about masks, are masks required? Not at this time, or no, but we, we do highly recommend those to be worn. If a kid does not have one, we will provide those for them at, at school. What about masks for special needs students? I've asked this model dear, she'll speak to about D S E. You want to go ahead and talk about that now?
Do we have the, are those the questions?
Um, well, you just want, I think this is the only one about D S E. Is if you want to just talk about how you're going to be evaluating those individually?
And we'll be, um, contacting the parents individually. And, um, if there is a, a health concern or somebody that has a compromised immune system, um, we do have options of providing, um, you know, home, home ed. We do have options to provide them with, um, with home-bound education. So, so that will be taken care of if there's somebody that has a compromised immune system or if there's somebody that opts for the tech, the tech program.
Will COVID testing be required for, um, prior to school for all staff and students? No, I don't think legally we can even ask of that, so that answer is, is no. As, as of now, Brother Danny, I talked about this earlier. Hey, I'm going to get tested today and say I'm all good and free, and that person I'm telling that to has, has it now, I just called it and I didn't, you know, so you can test one day and have it the next day or not. So, um, what would happen if a child appears at the yield at school? That student will be sent to the clinic area for assessment, away from all the other, uh, away from all the other students at a safe distance to await the parent to, to pick them up. And we will, um, the next one says, what do I do if my child has a fever? So we're going to have to update this information based on what Kate let us know, um, earlier. Just in case you couldn't hear and you're watching, if you leave with a fever in the past, we have said 24 hours without, um, medication. And that also, uh, especially for the younger ones, that doesn't mean, you know, I'll be broken and the fever comes down and, and send up, but now it's going to be three days without, without a fever. So that would be something, hopefully the parent will work with the teacher on so that way we would be able to get them their work over that three days.
Fans of the doctor.
It says 24 hours.
That, right, that's, that can change.
Danny, are we, um, far as our schools and like, I know we're looking at different supplies, but, um, and this might be a question, um, far as D S E. What type of awareness education that we're putting in our schools for not just, you know, be a, you know, a teacher and a student, but just like in our, um, like a poster or just some type of awareness education? Because, you know, kids are young, they can be cruel. And, you know, like Katie said earlier, you know, send a kid go home for food or, you know, something else. But kids, our A D M right now is COVID, COVID, COVID. And then a kid come back to school and someone's teaching, oh, you got COVID. You know, we're ourselves, we're still trying to figure all this out. But has there been any type of, um, mindset that we need to make sure that we're putting as much education out there that COVID is, you know, is a condition, but it's not like, you know, it's, that kids need to be, you know, making fun of it, you know, understanding that you just can't study for COVID and it's not.
A great question, and after our last meeting, I followed up with Kate and Martine, and we were going to work on getting, go ahead and get some information out. But, you know, just like we've always done for the little ones, um, the little, the little jingles or funny videos about finding kids to wash hands. So Kate, we'll be able to do those some more on COVID, some education throughout the district. And the Health Department was really good in the spring before we were out. They gave us tons of posters to put up all around school, you know, about tips, recommendations. I mean, the biggest thing was wash your hands, that's the biggest thing I've heard over and over. Wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands. Uh, so they were really big, big on that. So whatever we're doing at summer school, make sure they do that during, during regular year.
I think what she's trying to say is, is.
The mental health part.
Mental health part of it, I mean, the, not making fun of the kids when they come back.
I mean, I know there's not going to be so much you can control, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we, we're doing all this preparation, but, you know, that's just something that we could easily overlook and then we get back and it.
We can have like a simple thing as a celebration for the kid when he comes back. So that, you know, they feel comfortable coming back, you know, that they don't feel that stigmatism that, oh, I'm a, they don't go near them kind of thing, or, of course, we're not supposed to go near anybody anyway, but I'm just saying.
I'm just concerned as to what it's talking about being more proactive.
Yeah, just as much information that we get from C B C, because stuff is changing, but as much as we can just promote that, you know, none of us is immune to this and none of us can control this. But we just want to, you know, have a mutual respect that it's changing every day. And as we get information, we want to put it out there, because we don't want someone to feel stigmatized. We don't want the kids to get a unhealthy mindset about what. We don't want the kids to get an unhealthy mindset about what this is and how this affects people. So we just wanna educate them as much as we can about, you know, what this is and how this affects us.
I don't wanna go to germline.
And I think what we, we talked about, um, having guidance, our guidance camps were going through some in-class lessons. So that is something that we talked about.
I just wanted to promote a healthy mindset and that kids are not feeling like, you know, if they are out or if something come up, they, they're gonna feel like, they gotta be ashamed, but there's nothing we can control.
And adding that second mental health part is kind of.
This moves into the next question. Will I be notified if another student tests positive for COVID in my child's classroom? So we had a lot of discussion with the Health Department on this. So the answer to that is they will notify the school. We will say if the Taylor County Elementary School has a staff or student test positive, we'll say, we will announce that a student or we won't say, we'll say individual has tested positive on this campus. At that point, it's, it's not, but it goes to them. They do all the tracing, they get names, they, they do all the phone calling, they do all of that at that point. Now, what we will do, we decided with our, our task force, I was gonna talk about this more earlier. What we do next, we'll release that, as soon as we find that out, we'll release that information out to parents. We have, um, we kinda joke around with what we call a clean team, whatever it is. If we have a positive at a school and we can, you know, working with them, if we can trace it to one school or multiple schools, that clean team is called that afternoon, that entire school is sanitized and cleaned that night. So the next day, we can reopen for all the children to come back. Now, they will take care of calling the ones who have been in contact tracing and they'll advise them whether they can come back to school or not, okay? But we will clean the school because what we feel like, if not, we're gonna be closing the school. We'll, we'll be closed more than we will be open. And that could be at five o'clock in the afternoon, six o'clock in the afternoon. We have to notify parents we're not in school tomorrow. And that's opens a whole nother can of worms, they can be. So we're gonna come in and clean, we're gonna sanitize so the next day, we will be, we will be open. Um, if that fails, like I said, I mean, I said, if I gotta be there, principals, administrators will be there all night. Whatever we gotta do to get that school cleaned, sanitized, to get it back open for, for the next.
So that would be if we have a positive test come in, we'll do that. This is eight days later, but, you know, up to eight days later when we get that positive test. So, we're up to test time.
And the health in our school starts in our community. We've got to stress in our community that, you know, everybody's so concerned about school, school, school. Well, it's, it's in the community. If people don't, if they won't save schools, they've got to be saving the community. Look, it's just that simple. I mean, those kids are coming from the community.
But, but answer Junie's question, say the pop test came back positive and it was eight days ago. It's kinda hard to send out an all call that, oh, that person could have been all over that school.
But you can't, you know, clean those, right?
So once they get a call.
We're already doing deep cleaning anyway, but we'll do, we'll do extra, extra deep cleaning once we have a positive, positive test.
So at what point and at what percentage, um, do, do our doors remain open no matter how many students or staff have tested positive?
That, and I forgot you asked me that earlier, I didn't think. Um, that question came up in our task force meeting and Pat was there. And, cause they asked him, what is, what is that number? And Pat said, you know, correct if I'm wrong, Pat said there isn't a number. That's something that they have to base, um, all the data and everything into that decision. But, you know, with it, you have to take all the factors into consideration before you can make that call. But, you know, I don't know what that number, number is. I'm sure if, you know, if there's an outbreak, obviously I would, the Health Department, I'm sure their recommendation I think for them would be to close and sanitize or something like that. But, um, I don't, that's just what we were told. There's not an exact.
So we remain open regardless? Or we have, we do have a point that we say we can't stay open?
From my understanding, Pat would approach me, I'd get a phone call at that point. He would advise us that due to X, Y, and Z or whatever it is, I'm recommending you close for so many days or.
Well, should we not know that when we start school? I mean, shouldn't we know what that point is or should, versus just going day by day and guessing?
Well, it is the Health Department that's in charge is what he's saying. It's not our call.
That we're not the school call. If something's over, you know, some kind of a guard.
And he's saying that he would have to take, you know, different factors. He would have to evaluate all those factors to make, to make that call.
I don't think there's any cut and dry thing. There's not, there's so many caveats to it. Are they from the same household? Are they directly linked?
Well, what I'm saying is, no, what I'm saying, if, if we have seven hundred students at the elementary school and we have a hundred students and staff that have tested positive, um, do we remain open?
I'll be honest, I don't know how we would, because we would have enough staff to run a school.
Well, what, what I understood was.
Everybody needs a warranty, I'm just being honest, I don't know how we'd.
Yeah, so what, do we have a point though where we say that? Like, do we open our doors knowing if this happens, this is the point where we do this?
I think from a staff side, I can answer that with say, if we had enough staff where it become a liability or a safety or a danger. You know, that would again have to be, I don't know what that, that number is different for each, each school. You know, we're not gonna, you know, at the high school, you've gotta have hall monitors. There are different things you've got to have when you get to the point where you can't have hall monitors or you couldn't serve food or you couldn't keep clean or you don't have teachers, I mean, at that point.
I'd like, I would, I'd like for us to open the doors with that plan in place that, like, are. Just in, in my opinion, we would be more prepared if we open our doors and we say, if we have X number of positives come back, that's the point we have to close our doors. We know that ahead, we don't let it get away with us. And then in hindsight, we probably should have closed the doors a week earlier. Especially when we've got a, a full week delay on test results. So we could have, we could have ten, we could have two kids test positive the first week of school. And by the time we get their results in, we have two hundred people that test positive because they've been contaminated in that time period. And if that happens, do our doors remain open or do they remain closed? Do, we have to make the decision minutes. So, I mean, at some point, I, I would like to open the doors with that decision already made.
I'm taught with, I mean, I, I mean, that's.
Danny, if I remember correctly, I thought it was the, the, the way we open schools was with the Health Department's blessing. But we'd also be doing the closing with the Health Department.
So would they might give us the, can they furnish the, or is there any protocol for this or?
She said it's different.
There's plenty of caveats to it. It's not a cut and dry at thirty cases, you will shut down the school because it depends on how they're linked. You know, it, it's.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna change for them.
But I think if Pat calls me and tells me we need to close, that's exactly what we're gonna, that's what.
I think it's, I mean, Bonnie just said something very important and I actually had a conversation with someone like that. I mean, this is a global issue. We as a school, we gotta be prepared. And I mean, I'm sure everybody in this room wanna know they're bracketed in the right direction and we're gonna have an answer for every scenario. But we don't know, we're on child territories. We're not going back, but we gotta move forward. Uh, we gotta program our mindset, we're gonna be able to afford with what information we have. But like Bonnie said, this is more of a community issue than it's just our school issue. We gotta figure out how we're gonna function as a school. But we in this room can't figure out how we're gonna function as a community and how we're gonna be proactive in our community to keep us safe. Cause even if we put our walls on everyone outdoors in our school, it's still in the community, it's still flowing. So our mindset can only be how we function as a school system. But as a community, as a whole, we gotta think about how do we keep our community safe? Well, we don't have to worry about this at the school.
And it's my understanding, and I may be wrong, and I'd like to ask this question. Um, I think Governor DeSantis said it, zero to eighteen, zero this in Florida. He's not worried about those age groups.
No, that's what's very.
That's what he said, uh, in one of his speeches. And, but here's the issue, the teachers are not in zero to eighteen, the administrators are not zero to eighteen. So I would like for somebody to verify that that's still the case. Because it's not the students that's the biggest concern, it's the faculty. It's what the students, what they may take home to their loved ones. And just like we've said all along, it's not so much the young people. They, they get over it, they, they do get it, it's no big deal. It's the vulnerable, it's the, it's the elderly. So, as a school, our kids should be fine. But what they do to the community may be different. So.
Can I say something? I don't know if I'm able to or not, but when I'm sitting here right now, I mean, I'm not in a mask. Some of you are and some of you aren't. But I could probably take, I'm just telling you from a teacher perspective, two of my classrooms could probably fit in this boardroom. So we're all adults and we're sitting in here, I think there's under twenty people, and you see how spaced out we are. So I wanna go back to school. I know lots of teachers that want to go back to school. But we've gotta come up with some kind of a way and a plan or some, some kind of a plan to move forward. Even if it doesn't work, just something, we gotta try something. Because I am not gonna have the privilege, when I go back in my classroom, of being this distant for my students. I teach second grade. So I'm going to be very, very close with all eighteen of my students. It's not gonna be like this. So what I'm telling y'all is, you know, it's really easy to sit out here and look at it this way. Um, but I think we have to really take that into consideration. I mean, teachers don't have office jobs. We all wanna go back to work, but we've got to be thinking about the big picture here. You know, it's not just students. Obviously, all of us are in this profession because we love kids, that's why we do what we do. But, um, you know, I really do, I worry because I feel like I'm fairly young and healthy. But some of my teachers that are in our teachers association are not in that same category. And so, you know, it just gets, I'm, I'm so concerned for everybody making decisions because these are not easy decisions for anybody to make. So.
And I even mentioned to Danny about the teachers wearing shields, face shields, with us, us supplying them for them. Because the student can still see the teacher, they can still hear the teacher. Whereas when you put on the mask, a lot of times you can't understand what somebody's saying. And that's gonna shield you from the child, and if you, everybody's gotta keep their hands washed.
The thing that concerns me, I mean, I'm just speaking as a teacher, I don't wanna say too much. But there's been lots of times before the pandemic where I as a teacher have been sick and really shouldn't have been at work. This happens all the time. I'll take a motor and go to work, you know, and parents send their kids to school with some ibuprofen. And I can't tell you every day how many kids I send to the clinic around twelve thirty or one that have a fever. Now, if you do the math on that, they've taken the ibuprofen, it's worn off, then the fever's there. And then we don't have this testing piece, you know, you don't have to be tested. So we can sit here and talk about it all day long. But really, unless a person is responsible enough to go and take a test or have their child tested, we're really just kind of going against the law. I mean, am I right?
That's the reason community has got to work with it.
Cause we don't, we can't force anybody to take a test.
Well, that's what Brother Danny was, I mean, we're relying a lot on, um, that you gotta be, parents have gotta be responsible if their kids are showing symptoms, it's in the school, take it to the doctor, go to their doctors, you know, advice and.
It's gotta start in our community, but we could just focus on what we're responsible within our school. We could just do what we can. But I don't, I don't think it's, no, none of us are gonna ever be comfortable like we was before. So I don't wanna, you know, denounce anybody's concerns. But I think we gotta move forward and we gotta figure out how to move forward in the current circumstances that we in.
Just so I don't forget, um, cause we just went on this today. Face shields, we do, we have, um, received face shields came in today. So staff wants face shields, and then we met today and went around to the schools and looked at, um, Plexiglas in, in certain areas, especially those high traffic, high traffic areas. Principals don't have a count, but we went ahead and got them a decent number. So if teachers, you know, it's gonna be hard for teachers to have a Plexiglas on their desk because like Katie said, especially the younger ones, they're right there with them. But if they want it, we will supply, we will supply those. So, um, we're about to spend a chunk of money on Plexiglas and have them be built for, for classrooms. But, um, one thing that we talked about, you know, can I volunteer at my child's school? Can I come on campus? Uh, we're not allowing any outside visitors to come into the school. And that's for the protection of our kids and, and our students. So, you know, beyond that front office, nobody will be allowed. Now, what's gonna be tricky is open house, you know, coming back a little ori- orientations part. That's gonna be, that's gonna be very tricky. So principals are, um.
Are we just considered doing virtual orientation?
But, well, there's gonna be two orientations, an orientation for that brick and mortar.
Yeah, have we decided to do virtual? I'm saying, cause they're, like, are we trying to prepare the schools for when the students come back? Have we just not just decided just to do virtual for either option?
We, and principals were gonna talk with their staff about this, and I didn't ask them about that today, we met honestly. But it was that they'll have options if they wanna do a virtual meeting, they, they can for brick and mortar. Now, if they're doing a tech, that parent's gonna have to come up to the school. They'll have to give them a scheduled time because they're gonna, they're gonna have to come get their laptop and some instructions for how to log on and things like that. So, I mean, there's just, there's no way around that. But schools will have that freedom if the teachers wanna do a virtual. And, you know, and this, no, anybody allowed on campus, that's no SATs meetings. You know, that's unless you just, you know, got to be there, you know, if you're counseling, of course, be able to come in. And I'm sure a lot of that would be virtual from those, um, outside, outside pieces. But this is again, something that will be evaluated, cause that's very important. So, you know, parents won't eat lunch with their kids, you know, that piece, that's why I will be evaluating this every couple of weeks to see if there's parts, you know, when we can start loosening up. And then that would be, of course, working with the Health Department and their, um, their team. How often will my child's classrooms be cleaned? So they're gonna be thoroughly cleaned, um, throughout, throughout the day. Custodians, I've asked the principals and I've told them, if you need more help, you need to let us know now. If you feel like, you know, this is expectation, we're expecting from these rooms to be clean. If you need more staff, you need to let us know now. So we can try to find people, hire them, get it to you guys for, for approval. Dan's been really good, um, we got foggers to go, I think we ordered twelve of them. That'd give us two, two apiece at each school. Um, I've talked about those, you know, where you come in and follow things. But Dan's also done a really good job on cleanings and training for custodians on, on those cleaning. Water fountains, we talked about, will be shut down. We have ordered parts to retrofit. Think he was able to find some, he was hoping those will be, we won't be able to do hollow water fountains, but a majority of them will be retrofitted to a bottle. Students can have their bottle to refill their, uh, their water.
What about those lines that get rid of the bacterias, you know, the lines they show? Do those really work?
Do you want to clean your toothbrush?
Yeah, they, they maybe not.
We're using something kinda like that, um, with the, uh, that'll, you remember I talked about the one that's gonna be the mist that will be electrified?
Yes.
I don't think we were able to, we tend to, we argue some of those, so it electrifies the mist, so it's the three sixty. So that way, if I'm just spraying right now, I'm only getting one side of that, the three sixty electrifies it and it goes and three hundred and sixty degrees cleans that, that mic. So we will have, um, some of those. Each, of course, each classroom's gonna have so, gonna have hand sanitizer. There'll be an extra bottle of spray. We're not asking teachers to clean toilets, deep cleaning, thing like that, but there will be supplies there. So like, you know, high touched areas, you know, we've got, you know, all of us are different. I can tell you, there's some teachers who are gonna be wiping that door handle every ten minutes with that spray. We're probably not wanting to spray in bottles. Um, and, you know, students can still wipe their tables. What we've asked to make sure is that that student only cleans their area. Just a quick, quick story, when my kids came home, I was, how's summer school doing? He said, Daddy, I don't understand what is, Miss Williams only made us clean our desks on Fridays. You know, we have to wipe these desks down every day. And so, um, so at least I know, you know, that's, that's going on, so you're cleaning. But again, they'll clean that area, custodians will come in and clean. Also, the cafeterias, all of that, we're spacing kids out in the cafeterias. There's gonna be multiple lunches at some schools. So that way the cafeteria can be cleaned and sanitized, um, in that, in that area. Of course, will there be safety and well-being education taught? We talked about that earlier, yes. School buses, we talked about that earlier, will be dispossessed and cleaned after every run. Also, assigned seats will be given. Also, assigned seats will be given on buses, that way to try to cluster the kids, the kids together.
Are we going to have um more runs? Because we know our buses are always being overfilled, so how are we addressing?
Wendy and I have talked about that and she's working on it. There's, there's a couple of cave yards here. Number one, just straight honest, you know, if we ran our buses at fifteen percent, you know, that, we would be hauling kids to school all day at fifteen percent. So what we will do, we will space students out the best we can. Wendy said that um in the morning time, we really don't have a problem with buses. Because just we don't have that many riders in the morning time. Afternoon is more of our problem. So we're looking at trying to find some more drivers for the afternoon. We've told the schools that there may be some times where a bus has to make a multiple run. She's going to try to add a couple of buses to some of those full buses to try to alleviate that. You know, just telling, you know, parents being honest, if you have some concerns, you know, with that, bring your child to school. We encourage you to bring him, bring him to school. I mean, we're going to do the very best we can on buses. But if we ran those buses at fifteen percent, it would, I mean, we'd be picking up kids at ten, ten or eleven in the morning time. I mean, we would, you'd have so many schedules, teach, I mean, it would just be chaos for for everyone. And so it's all in the other districts, we're following a lot of lines with them, we're going to do the best we can on that spacing. Of course, if we get too full or whatever, that's when Wendy would call for another bus to come. I've told principals, again, we're going to have to be flexible. That afternoon, we may have to keep some kids back. And another bus may have to come and pick them up and it's going to have to be sanitized. So we're just going to have to be flexible and do the best we can uh in in that area. It's going to be, you know, same thing in the classrooms, we're going to spread them out. We're going to do the best they can, even the classes out. But you know, there's only so much spacing in some of, some of our, some of our classrooms. So but that, you know, I've heard that, how are you going to space them out? That's, that is a very big challenge of how we're going to space them out. And two, telling middle school kids, y'all can't get next to each other. Or telling, you know, little kids, you need to keep spacing. We all know that's not going to happen with little kids.
Are we putting the dots when they're, when they're in line?
In the cafeterias, yes, we talked about that today.
Summer camp has been a good practice time for us.
Yeah, and I will say that, and I think the, I was kind of worried about it. We were all worried about starting because we got the information so late. But I think that was a good decision for us to do summer camp. Because it's able to work out some things and see things that's working really well.
Well, even with the bus situation, I mean, we, it's not going to be an issue, but we're going to be having three or four kids in one seat. It's going to be two kids to a seat?
I think if they're the same family, you could see three to a seat, you know, if it's the same family. But it would not be three to a seat of a mixed, um, you know, a mixed, a mixed family where they could be exposed or something like that.
And I mean, it's the bus driver too. I mean, I feel like our bus drivers are going to have to be a little more proactive. Because I know in the poor, you get kids on the bus and they can't, they can't hold a whole seat.
Right.
But I mean, we can't have kids standing in the aisle because somebody wants somebody to sit down with us. So I'm just saying, we're going to have to, seem like we're going to have to do a little more um checking on these school buses up up front. To make sure that, you know, we can't be holding a whole seat.
With the side seats.
Yeah. But that's a standard, we had issues in the past, you know, we have discipline issues. Because the kid wanted to control the school bus versus the bus driver controlling the school bus. So that's what I'm asking.
And that probably a good point about bus drivers, we had checked about um Plexiglas for the driver. DMV would not allow Plexiglas for a driver because it could block their view. They can wear a face shield. So Wendy's looking at getting drivers face shields if they want them. But they cannot, we cannot install Plexiglas in there for for the drivers through the safety, safety reasons. Uh, meals, like I said, we've talked about that, social distancing, um students in the cafeteria. Some want to know if my child is in the tech, can they still come to the, can they still come to the school and eat? Yes, now there's some logistics that's going to have to be worked out with that. But yes, if you're in the tech program, you are still allowed to come eat. Now, you know, back to that family that had nine different kids. You know, I was kind of thinking, you know, with Benny and the federal regulations, they're very strict, federal regulations. I was hoping if you had nine kids, they could just go to one spot. Unfortunately, that's not the case. You will have to go to each school where your child is is at. So we were, Benny just had a call with that today. I hope we were going to be able to be flexible with that. But and the, some of the reason is, and I'm going to say this is a good reason, but this is the reason that the feds give. Is that you can't give a smaller kid a high school portion. So some, some, some of the reasons.
Now, are they just going to be picking the food up and leaving or they kind of in the evening?
No, they pick it up and leave.
Oh, okay.
Cafeteria staff will also have their temperatures checked. And Benny's talked about um extra protection for them in the cafeterias, um on the serving lines. Really making sure, he's talking to them, really encouraging them to to mask up and different things. And we've talked about, you know, for especially for our cafeteria, ladies at the register, Plexiglas. Instead of punching numbers in, he's trying to go to a check mark system. So that way, it's it's safer, safer on, you know. Safety, you know, safety and security, will uh safety procedures change? You know, safety drills, will have to be altered for social distancing, you know, access to campus. And access to school campuses will be restricted with the tanks protocols. We will still have our SRDs on campus, everything like that will be, will be the same. Mental and emotional wellness, how will my child be able to communicate to the school counselor about academic or personnel concerns? If a child is having socially emotional trauma, stress, they need to reach out to the school counselor, mental health provider. Everybody in the ESC office, we want to help. They need to reach out and contact those, those people. My child was referred for an evaluation before the COVID nineteen outbreak, when will that be done? So this is another ESC question about an evaluation. And so school psychologists will continue with evaluation soon after school resumes. The school coordinator is the point, contact the guardian, use the purpose. Let's see. The social worker, you know, talking about social workers, y'all all know, we have Rhonda and Betsy for our social workers. Who are rock stars, they're amazing. But again, ESC office can get you in touch with Rhonda and Betsy if anything uh is there. And I think we've talked about social and emotional pretty, pretty good. I mean, we do know with isolations that there's going to be a lot of anxiety coming back, coming back to the school. Uh, school sanitation, I think I talked about that pretty well, about Dan's getting the the recommended. We already have the recommended cleaning supplies, trying to give them everything that they need. I've asked him to have a six week um stockpile of supplies. So that way, if we had a storage, we had enough for six weeks. So that was, I did advise him of of that. And I know I've seen the truck here a lot unloaded cleaning, cleaning supplies for for us. Um, again, high touch areas will be cleaned more often, bathrooms. And we also did talk about um documentation will be done, bathrooms and classrooms be clean. So that way, if we need that documentation, we we have it. Just accountability, just making sure we're doing everything we can to keep, keep everybody safe.
Has there been any new information that has came down far as um COVID nineteen? And how long we live on services or what services it um live on? Has there been any of that?
I think the last I saw the longest it would live on a surface was up to three days. I'm, I'm not sure. But I don't, I don't want to state that as a, as a fact.
I know, I think eight hours, twelve hours, twenty-four hours, I went to thirty-six.
What the temperature is, what the humidity is, but I think that's the longest they've been able to look for that.
You know, one thing we had talked about was uh, I've had to talk to some parents who said, you know, I'm not sending my child back. If they're going to be in that room for seven hours all day long, I'm just not, not doing it. So, you know, just like we're going out summer, they are going outside playing, they are doing social distancing. The playground will be open. CDC actually does not recommend sanitizing uh playground. A lot of times it's wood and stuff like that. But we will clean those high touch area like monkey bars or, you know, hot, the, anywhere where their hands, really high touch areas. Those areas will be cleaned on the um, on the monkey bars and playground with the. So you know, a big one, going back to that again, if there's a positive test in my child's classroom, what's going to, what's going to happen? And we called the cleaning crew in, just to reemphasize this, because this goes back and forth a lot. Cleaning crew does come in and sanitize overnight. Like I said earlier, health department takes over. They tell who can come back to school, when and where and all, you know, all of that, all of that information.
So it won't be where we're sending everybody home for fourteen days? It's going to be based off what direction the health department goes.
Right. Tracking with that. Uh, another, you know, talking with, I'm not sure, I think I've covered most of this. You know, talking with Katie, one thing, there's, you know, with the federal government, there was some FM, FM LA documents came out and they can vary. Depend, there's which area you fall under, you know, if an employee gets sick or if an employee's child gets sick. So um I've asked Ms. Peel and Mr. Thompson, Ashley have been working on a Q and A and look for employees. Because I know they're, they want to know that. So that information should be out Thursday, Thursday. So call me a hundred percent to just give you a short version from my understanding. Well, this, this could change, so it don't, won't be to a hundred percent. But is that if an employee gets sick at work with COVID and they can telework, they do not have to use their time at home if they can telework. So, you know, a lot of our employees could telework if they were to come down with with COVID.
Or they have to be quarantined.
Or they have to be quarantined, anything like that. And of course, you know, we have to have documentation, it's not.
Are they going to be required to work? Like if they get positive, they're going to be quarantined?
It'll be, I mean, it really be up to the employee, the employee just said, I want to take my own leave. They can, they can do that and I have to. But if they get positive and they feel good enough, you know, what we talked about, there would have to be some expectations. That if you're teleworking at home, these are those expectations. And if you can do those, we can't, you know, you don't have to take the leave. Now, if you're like sick, sick and you can't work, then that's where the leave, you would have to take your own leave. But that's based off FM LA interpretation there. And then there's also the other side of that, where if an employee's child gets, gets sick. There's a couple of variables uh in there that can cause you which way, you know, whichever way you have to, have to go.
It just gives options.
You get other options, yeah. You know, one thing it says, if you have childcare, I think if, if childcare is provided. How is it, if you have childcare provided, you have to come to work? Trying to think how that would work. It was kind of, like we said, was if somebody, if a kid tests positive, the mom is going to be the one that keeps the kid. So the mom, you're not going to be able to come to work because you got, so you don't have childcare. So it was kind of some iffy things in there. But they're going to get back for you and get it really clear so we can get it out to all the members and everybody, all the staff to understand that.
I had a question for Kate. So I'm just talking hypothetically, let's say I get coronavirus in my class and I'm out for fourteen days, you know, I test positive. And then let's say my son or daughter, they get it, but they're not positive for twelve days into my fourteen days. Then they would be required the fourteen days if they tested positive, right?
It's not fourteen days for a positive. So there's, there's a test base release, which is two negative tests. And then there's symptom base, which is it, it needs to be at least ten days since your symptoms first started. And three days like fever before, before you can go back. So it's fourteen days for someone who is exposed to a positive.
This is a good time for all transitions in mind. Come on, Martine.
But the exposure or the contact is still the same as what I understood from the task force meeting, right? Six feet, fifteen minutes or longer is considered a direct contact.
So is your question like, you get it, but then your son gets it? So you're, are you asking would your days be extended?
Well, they'd have to be because I would be the sole interviewer for my child and I'm a teacher. Okay, I was making sure I understood that. Can you say that again?
Yeah, we already did the box there.
Thank you, I just want to make sure I'm really clear on that because I've gotten that a lot.
Podium, you will cover the podium.
How do you have it, ages?
Uh, there was two between the ages of fifteen and seventeen and two between the ages of ten and fourteen. That's how I think.
They were all agreed at ten.
So they did, they have to log them on?
Um, I have one other health department question that y'all might be able to answer. I saw a statistic from another source that said thirty-one percent of children, I believe it was under the age of eighteen, are tested positive. Is that correct from State Department?
I don't remember the positivity rate on top of my head, I have to look right at that report.
Okay, I saw that Saturday, I was just curious if y'all could verify.
I would have to look.
So tell me, what would it look like in a classroom if you have a teacher and a student test positive? What would, what would steps be following that?
So if, if they test positive at the same time, is that what you're saying?
Or, or even within a few days of each other?
So we would contact trace with each one of them individually. Um, all of their contacts, whether they're home contacts, whether they are, you know, coworkers, whomever that would be.
So what would that classroom look like the following day?
Empty.
Empty.
Really unlikely.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of that depends on, you know, like, like Katie with her class. What were the chances that she would be able to like not have, if, if she was positive?
If she has it, she probably got it from one of her students.
Well, we, I can't even say that, but what are the chances?
In an even day, and I think I'm just giving y'all scenarios because I'm in a classroom. But with these little children, if we pull them in a small group, you know, I know that would have to be modified and things like that, which we haven't even gotten there yet. But realistically, on, I'm around twenty or eighteen students within that criteria that you mentioned. Every day I'm at work, plus other people I come in and contact with.
But if she's, she's.
I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just being honest.
She's in contact with them and she has a shield on. Doesn't matter, and she gets her shield on. But if, but if a child tests positive, then she's going to be in that trace. Because she's been within that close proximity for over fifteen minutes exactly. But that mask doesn't, the shield doesn't. And so um, there's a reason that a teacher invented airborne, teachers catch everything their kids have. So I mean, they get sick and you, I mean, you know this, you're not going to go, you're, you're, it's not going to go through your classroom and you don't have it. It just, it doesn't work that way for them. So that, I think that is my biggest concern. It's like, is what you just said, like we have a positive in the classroom and we have a teacher that's positive or a couple of students. Then I said that classroom will be empty for how many days? Students, most likely, fourteen days.
I think, you know, the health part of this is a big piece, obviously. I, you know, I worry about the coronavirus, just like y'all do, I'm sure. But if it, but we're also worried as teachers, you know, you know, likely everybody, you're, you're, probably you're going to be okay if you get this, for the most part, looking at statistics. But what we're worrying about is what you're saying, the fourteen days, I mean, that makes school like a revolving door. So that's the concern for teachers because we're already, we're already juggling a lot of other things. I mean, I want to go back to work, I don't want y'all to think that I don't, I do.
But what's the alternative, I mean, there's no answer for that.
Right, there's no, I mean, we're just kind of going in circles here because there's no cut and dry solution for this.
This is just, uh, like I said, this is just. It's not, it's not a solution at all. But the only cut and dry solution is to be straight virtual, then we don't have to worry about the empty classrooms. Because the teachers are all doing the same thing, students are doing the same thing and it's.
So the government will say there will be brick and mortar.
But, but we don't have that option. That would be the annually cut and dry, you know, where everybody's life is the same every day and. We're all. I, I hear what you're saying, but I can remember when this first, the breakout first happened. And I went to Walmart and I went.
And I went to Walmart and I went to Save-A-Lot and I've never seen so many people in there in my life.
That's true.
And I'm like, these people need to be at work, these kids need to be in school. Because they're out here getting exposed to everything if they were where they were normally supposed to be, they wouldn't be exposed to.
I, every kid I know wants to be in school, I, um, they do, they, I've asked them and they are ready to go back, they wanna see their friends, they wanna go to school. They wanna be in school, I haven't had a single, and I've probably asked twenty-five kids, are you ready to go back to school? Yes, I am. They are, they are ready to be back, but I don't.
This is gonna have to take it, in each case, as it comes, and hopefully it doesn't. Hopefully, it's not gonna be a horrible thing, and hopefully in November, it's not gonna be a return. And I mean, I think as a small community, we're at advantage, and from what I'm hearing in other districts. And what we're putting into place, I think we're going to be in a good place as well. Because of the smallest of what we have. That's just what I'm seeing from other counties.
Yes, we will be clean, classrooms will be clean and the, I mean, we, we will say we're doing everything we can possibly do to stop the spread of it. Keep it out of our schools and out of our classrooms, like without a doubt, listening to Danny, I don't know how much more we could possibly do. So keep it safe.
Maybe the health department has more really input that we.
Did we miss anything? Now's a good time to let us know.
Yeah, the the biggest thing is just trying to limit cross exposure as much as possible. You know, that's kind of like when it fall, you know, everything, everything, you know, it was positive and it falls back on us. But for us, you know, if the contact tracing is, for lack of a better term, a nightmare of a case. You know, this kid was over here, or this teacher was over here, and you have to take into consideration, not only with these children and these teachers as well. If the teacher has positive, the teacher's gonna have contacts at the school and in their personal life. You know, so I mean, these things, you know, that's, that's where we really get into this, like really stressing that if you feel sick, stay home. Like this is the lightest little bit of anything that is abnormal for a person, stay home, no matter how minor it may be, it may seem. You know, headaches are one of the symptoms.
And that's, and in your research or in your tracing that you've done. What is the main thing that you see that you're like, you should have done that, or why did you do that? Do you, if you have that reaction, do you have like a, if you, if you said, you know, like, you know, one of these people is da, 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 they wouldn't be here?
Going to work while sick.
Going to work while sick.
And headache is one of the main symptoms you just said, so and a lot of people go to work with a headache, thank you.
So that's how it's getting spread, people that are sick are not staying home.
Well, they don't understand it.
Well, we don't, yeah.
And I know several people that have had it and they had no clue, they felt had allergies, had no clue then.
Yeah, but it's.
I mean, they would have argued with you and said they didn't have it. Y'all tested them and they.
Martine and Kate, we were, um, the principals talked to us today at the younger grades and um Kate and I had a quick conversation about this. Was trying to um this, the kids maybe sit, if they're sitting at a table together, those kids also sit at lunch together. You know, trying to keep those four kids more together, of course, we've changed it out every so many weeks, but that way in case, you know, we had a positive. We could try to narrow it down to that group of kids that hasn't been, you know, exposed to so many others, so that was a recommendation we had today.
Did you guys come up with any more suggestions about our um six to twelve graders? Because I know you said in our last meeting that K, K through five was gonna kind of be easier to keep those kids together. But like with our high school, because the kids, you know, have different schedules and different classes. Have um the high school team came up with any suggestions regarding that, or is it just gonna still come down to the contact tracing?
Yeah, but it's gonna be really tough because they switch classes, you know, so I did talk to Ms. McCoy, we had a conversation, and she's gonna reach out. She's got some, you know, one idea is the halls, all hallways are one direction. But you know, she's gotta figure out if this hallway is one direction this way, my next class is one door over the other way. You know, how are we gonna, there's just some logistics.
So skill's gonna be hard to try and.
Is she gonna supply some wipe, that wipes for each individual student when they walk in the door, pull one down, go wipe their desks down, wipe their hands down, before they go, before they sit down behind somebody else?
I would, I'm, I wanna say like definitely, because if we're gonna clean the desk, who they make sense that they're changing classes?
They're big enough, they can wipe it down and keep it clean themselves, and and if you have that available for them when they walk in the door. And they can do their hands, their hands, grab one of those, go wipe that desk down, and then, you know, in their hands.
I got one question, I was just wondering, um, has the health department or this DOH as a whole? Have they decided to put more um awareness and information out about contact tracing and importance of it? Because we're a small community, you know, from day one, since we heard about one case, everybody was trying to connect the dots, but. There's nothing we as a community can do that's like y'all job, that y'all um, that y'all, you know, feel an expertise, so. Is DOH, DOH trying to come out with any more like PSAs or any more information to stress what they're doing? To make sure that contact tracing is on them and not us as a community?
Right, and and they do, they, we do have some like infographics, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, are are they trying to do anything more like with social media or just with the media and just getting more information out?
Not that I've heard, um, I mean, we have ones that we literally can share and push out and things like that and maybe get to like um, release paper or something like that. With um, you know, as far as like mass things going out, not that I'm aware of, that doesn't mean it's not in the works.
I don't know, I just was concerned that, you know, like you say, if it does come down to a situation where we do have a, a teacher that's positive. And you guys start going contact tracing, I, I just don't want our staff in the school to get stressed out trying to connect the dots. Because there's not really much we can do, because y'all are gonna maybe know what information to hone in on versus we just saying, wow, I was in David's office earlier. Like y'all are honing on more information to kind of really get down to the logistics of.
And it, it gets really sticky because we have the HIPAA involved, so like, like, let's say you were in contact with a positive. I'm not gonna call you and say, Ms. Nell, you, you know, I'm gonna call and say you were in contact with somebody that is positive. We're not gonna say you were in contact with John Smith who tested positive, even if it's your, your sister, you know, um. So that's for, that's why we're not asking that somebody else do it, that's why, it's all going back on us. Um, it is self-reported by the individual that's positive, so that's another thing, like big thing for us, like please be honest. Even if you're wasting your readers, but please be honest with you, all you have in contact, who owns your house, things like that, you know, because that, that is a big part of how we limit the spread. Is when we miss it.
I would say too, there's a certain window that we look at, like two days before the positive person becomes symptomatic until, up until the day they receive their positive test. So if you were in contact with someone who, you know, two weeks later they became symptomatic, then you don't necessarily worry about that, from that exposure.
I just know it's gonna be more, you know, on y'all and uh, I just hope that we as a, you know, institution can remember that, that we get on y'all and not us.
And and that's, that's where we are asking for your assistance in this, is to try as, as much as possible, you know, we understand reality. But to, to try as much as possible to limit those, those inter exposures that you just, you can have, you know.
Danny, um, wanted, I know that our students, but what about our faculty that does have medical problems that are afraid to come back? What, what are we doing for that? How are we handling that? I mean, I mean, I know you got a job, and even like if you like me at my job, I mean. I don't go, I don't get paid, um, and I'm considered a essential worker, so, and they are too, so what do you, I mean.
Talking with.
Because I think there's some concern out there for that.
And I, well, the answer that I have to give is not an answer that I would like to give, um, but it's the answer that we have to give. So I'm just gonna use the high school for an example. Transition time in the high school is a very, very important time. Ms. McCoy has to have key people out and out for her students, we have to have so many people there further from school to run, first to ensure safety. So the first thing if somebody has some medical issues or concerns, we will try our best to help with that. But at the end of the day, there's still expectations that we have to have that person to do. Trying to get some, um, you know, speaking of grand, a lot of that's what they need to advise from attorneys when we have, we have came down and solved this. You know, we have to lay those expectations out, and if the boy can't do those, if we're not able to come to a consensus. They're either to take time or they resign or or retire. We did have an employee that came in just yesterday or before and went ahead and retired because of her health concerns. And that's not the answer that I wanna give, that I'd like to give, but that's the reality, I mean. Ms. McCoy has four or five people who couldn't do hall monitoring duty, what is, what is she supposed to do? You know, something wasn't happening, or a doctor's breakout, or, you know, you just have to, there's key people we have to have to run a school, so.
Now, wasn't there CARES money that came down, um, that said that if it was a situation? I know initially there was CARES money came down and the employee was supposed to have the option. Well, they could, um, only get a certain percentage of their pay before they had to, you know, start using their own house.
They had a doctor's note that says due to their health, they can't come back to work, there is. Uh, I think they, we pay you like the first ten days and I bet they have to use so many days of leave. And then if M L A kicks in, but you're right, it's only like a third or two thirds of.
But we need, we have done what we needed to do on our end, so our employees do have that option, right? Because what I first heard about it, I was told that it had to be something the agency would do. And I know a lot of agencies didn't wanna have to deal with it, so they wouldn't do it, but we've done what we needed to do, so if our employees.
Actually, that we have to do that, and that's gonna be in that Q and A, because employees need, need to know that. And like I said, there's, there's so many variables, I hate to talk too much about it because.
Yeah.
One little variable can put you in a different bracket compared to this variable puts you in this bracket, and there's, there are different, different outcomes, but. I just wanna say I appreciate the health department, everything y'all have done, and I appreciate you as a board being very supportive of us. I appreciate Katie working with us, her and Michael, the entire union, because we're in this, we are definitely in this together, this uncharted workforce all. I can tell you, I've never seen a stretch as thin as we are now with so many uncertainties, you know, starting school back is always a challenge. To start a school back under these circumstances are definitely a challenge. I just ask the parents, the community, that please show him that they be flexible with us, we're not perfect. Some of the stuff I said tonight may not be exactly right, it may change, I'm not saying I'm one hundred percent, percent right, but like Katie said, at some point, we gotta make a decision. And we've got to go back to school, that's the reality of it, so please be willing and understanding and and keep the common, I mean, we got a question today from a community member. Um, about a band question about something with their, their swab and a trumpet, or some issue with how the, this pit comes out. You let, yeah, and.
Airborne, yeah.
And possibly what our students were doing, they shouldn't have been doing, I had no idea, so Ms. McCoy's another plan for a cup that. You know, and they need to let their, get their swab out, get a little cup, and put the trash can up, have to wash their hands, but that's something that really none of us. I had no, I, I mean, you know, that was, you know, possible, you know, that was there, so.
Yeah, and 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 we, we're football stars, and we play a contact sport, I mean, sweat's gonna fly, that's just gonna happen.
You know, they were asking questions about volleyball and basketball, so we don't have answers to yet, because we're waiting on that, they should say, but. So we appreciate those, those questions, and kind of please look at the information we have out there. You know, just sometimes those questions can't get answered um before, but you know, email us, call us.
That's what I, that's what I recommend, I see a lot of questions, I've gotten a lot of emails with a lot of questions, I hope you said that. Because we really need to be pointing people to the correct answers, not trying to come off the top of our heads with the answers. Please go to the district website, it will be updated, it will have the information, so that's what they need to do.
I'd much rather we still got three and a half, four weeks more students, I'd rather us have the question now, something we didn't think about, know was playing out than. The day before school, somebody says, what did y'all think about this? We're like, oh, now we gotta do it real quick, so.
Right.
You know, I wanna thank our staff too, because everybody here, I mean, IT, um, Connie, Alicia, and Sharon, Tim, I mean, everybody's just being so, so amazing. Principal staff, everybody's just, we're really coming together, you know, one good thing I think is bringing this cluster together, we're, we're having to work even harder together. Because I really appreciate.
And I really appreciate this task force that y'all put together because they're, they're making some real hard decisions and they're making some. I have to really do a lot of thought into the process of what they would, you know, have, what's the best thing to do? And and we really appreciate y'all working with us.
All right, do that, any other questions you remain?
I got two questions, um, because we kind of went off and I know I'm responsible for some of that, but Danny, um. Back to the two options, where it's brick and mortar or whether is we gonna do the other parent do the tech program. Um, can you kind of just give a update to the board as to where we at with having our system and if it's been installed? Or if there's been training, like where are we at with this option, if this second option is moving forward?
Talking with Ms. Pearson, I wanna believe, I believe they started some training on Friday, I know there was some training today. Um, she asked us, we really, I'd say came down hard on that team last week trying to get some answers and. Her thing was, y'all, if you can just give us till next week, I'll have a lot more answers for y'all. You know, I was, it was even kind of like, I wish the district would tell us more because we feel like they're holding information back. I promise you, if we do more, we could tell more, you know, there's some things that are out of our hands, you know, we got to get Canvas. And we're bugging them to death, but there's some things we can't do until Canvas flips those buttons and then, you know, with uh Florida Virtual Global. There's some uploading that's gotta take, take place, and so they have put together, what they have done is a cohort. Of counties that they have came in, so we're right, there's ten, there's ten counties with us in this cohort. So, you know, there is ten other counties that's right there with us, so we're kind of waiting on them to release that information. So we can get everybody on train, but our, our goal is to fully be able to implement it when teachers come back. To give them the time they need to train and to, and to learn the program, and there's still a lot of questions we have about the, the program, exactly how it's.
But as soon as the information come in, you guys will be giving to the community.
Yes, we, I called principals today, what I expect is a weekly email out to staff, um, keeping them updated on what's going on. About the uh, about the tech part.
Okay, and um, earlier you gave a scenario um about teachers, but I was kind of confused. Um, I thought it was gonna be either or, um, the teacher was gonna be doing brick and mortar. And not, they were gonna be doing brick and mortar and tech, so will our teachers be doing both or will they be doing either one?
It, it's really gonna, the, the honest answer to that is it depends on the numbers. It, it really will.
Originally, I think, we decided that you'd have separate ones, but that's changed.
It's a very good, here's what happened, the very beginning, when we looked at this, we were calling them, I guess, super users, that was the, the team originally. And they were just gonna go in and do a lot of the late work, have it uploaded curriculum, so everybody didn't have to do that. That was gonna be their job, because there really was no online curriculum that we were gonna have to use. So by us getting um, uh, uh, Virtual Global, the curriculum is done. So Sher, Sharon said, we gotta give, I mean, they're not letting very many districts, like us and Leon, or one of ours, be able to pilot, pilot that. So that, what she calls a gift, what she means is instead of those teachers, teachers having to upload all of that curriculum, it's already done for them. Now, what we did talk about, Ms. Law, you were there with me, so make sure I say this correctly, is we are giving teachers the autonomy that. What fits them the best, we're just asking for consistency, you know, across the board, um, you know.
Have to do their own stuff.
We got, we have two math teachers that are at the top of the stage. We have, we have two math teachers that are at the top of the state every year, two of the best in the state. I don't really wanna tell them they have to go change what they're, what they're doing. So, if they, if they choose to use what they're, it's fine, but they just have to do a little more uploading theirself, whereas Florida Virtual already has it done. Now, from my understanding, we're hoping we'll be able to pick and choose, but we've got to have that consistency. I'm just gonna use Hayden for an example, so if Hayden's in class today, but he has to go home for several days, he can just, there's that consistency in that flow, and he's in class, he's out, now he comes back, trying to keep it flowing. Now, that's easier to say, it sounds really good, I just hope it can go that, that fluidly. I mean, I'm just gonna be strictly honest, that's the way it should go, but we all know how sometimes that, that can be. But we do wanna make sure teachers have that autonomy to, to be flexible with what, what they're using to, to agree.
Uh, right now, yes, it is, it's gonna be them doing both. Like, teachers will be doing brick and mortar, and they're gonna be doing the tech.
If, let's just say like Ms. Fletcher, use her example, let's just say Katie is just, hey, all we're asking you to do is brick and mortar, that's all we're asking you to do. The only thing we may have to ask for the principals, or she is, is, I'm gonna just use Hayden again. Hayden, Hayden now comes down with a virus, and he's out for five days. Well, I mean, I would think as a teacher, I would just say, hey, I'm just gonna take the laptop home, I'm just gonna upload, do this, these assignments. That's one scenario is to do that, or the other scenario, you know, he's fifth grade math, all these students are doing it, fifth grade tech. So, it could be, okay, Hayden, for this week, five days, we're gonna move, you're gonna have this Bonnie student for those five days. And then once she come back, he'll come back to Ms. Fletcher's class, so. There's a couple of different scenarios that can be, and I really would like us to be a site-based kind of decision, so they can work with the teachers on that, what fits their needs. Because we have, maybe they may have some teachers that are really tech savvy, and then honestly, there may be some who's a little more scared, who's, you know, I mean, there's that people. So, I really would like to place the teacher's strengths, the principal, and to do that work into the, work in the staff.
I just appreciate that we, I hope they will have the flexibility to kind of, you know, it's not one size fits all, it is flexibility.
And the main thing is if they're, if they're out, maybe we'll come back to what they're used to, and then if they have to go again, it's not like they're going to come completely different, um, you know, assignments or whatever.
I mean, that's fine, I just was, I guess I had in my mind that if we got two hundred students back, we was gonna probably have like so many teachers in the classroom, where it would be so many that just could be specifically doing tech. So, I was just trying to wonder what decision as a district we made on, if it was gonna be a situation like that, or if it was gonna be, like you say, um, they'll be doing both, so.
That's a, that's a good, good question, and it could be either really at this point.
Yes, but right now, if you had to predict, um, once you currently have, um, done the survey, percentage-wise, what do you think, brick and mortar versus virtual?
Uh, if I was per, you know, it's kind of, the majority, now, the majority of people I hear from are, you know, are, are around, you know, around teachers and stuff, is, is brick and mortar. But then we have that, I mean, I would never thought that family died, would have went...
Virtual.
Virtual, so, I, I would hope it come in eighty, maybe at least eighty percent brick and, brick and mortar.
What you feel like is headed that way?
I think somebody said Leon's age was sixty, which I thought was really interesting, but...
That got a little bit longer, but not bad, if you feel like their survey.
I think their deadline was yesterday, when I seen it going around, that they had, they cut off there with yesterday.
Leon County did make a decision on their early sports, their, their, um, volleyball, and I saw that last night, that they did, they, they're in a dress, the fall season, but they, they, they canceled their...
Yeah, I know, I saw it last night, and it could be a different, that they canceled all their, uh, summer practices, their voluntary workouts. And they said they wouldn't be, unless they get laid last night, that they were gonna be releasing their volleyball, football stuff, information, so... But they have, I think, some cases has positive up there, so they decided to just shut down, um, the volleyball workouts and everything, so... But, like I said, um, we did get a survey from F H S A about, uh, like, our pace consortium for football, about if everybody could align, you know, kind of have the same start times or whatever. And so, we did say we would be open to aligning with those districts to, you know, so it didn't all be the same across, across the board, but I haven't seen a decision.
I saw something on Facebook, said that they were afraid of the fall season being canceled, you know, all stay home.
Anything else? Okay, any other questions?
Um, I have one other health department question that I wanted to ask Kate, so, and I'm just talking hypothetically, because that I know of, I have not had the coronavirus. But let's say I go back to work, and I get the coronavirus, and I'm home for fourteen days, and I'm feeling good, I've had the negative test, and I'm back at work. And then two days later, another one of my students comes down with COVID nineteen, then that process would start all over again, is that correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yeah.
They don't know if you can get it again yet.
Right, but that's the protocol, that's what would happen, yeah, for close contact, they're isolated home for fourteen days.
Are there places some people can depend at twice?
Not, not that I've seen, but I mean, I think it's still so new that data is emerging, you know, there are new studies, so, not locally.
Yep.
Okay, remember, Andy, uh, a lot of discussion here, uh, a lot of work has been put in to bring us the information that we had tonight. And, um, once again, though, you know, two weeks from now, it may be different. This is what's so frustrating, uh, but I, but there's still work going on and adjustments having to be made. Um, only thing I'll say, I hadn't seen anything tonight, uh, I've been to the task force meetings and so forth, and kind, you kind of about what was going to be presented this evening. Um, but I just wanna say this, there's a lot that I don't know, and there's a lot that we don't know. We do know there's a virus out there, and that virus is real. Uh, this is a health issue, and so we're having to rely on our health department. And they're the ones who will have to be guiding us through this year. Sometimes they may tell us some things that we don't, we can't, you know, we won't, they don't make sense to us, but they are the ones who are gonna have to guide us through, uh, this, uh, this virus we've got. In fact, the virus is in control, we're not in control, the virus is in control. It's real, uh, it has caused a lot of deaths, it has touched my family this past week, lost cousins with virus down south. Um, so, um, you know, and what came to me tonight, while I was in helping about this, there was someone many generations ago who said, am I my brother's keeper? And in a time like we're in right now, we need to be our brother's keeper.
Amen.
Uh, because here's the thing, the decisions we make on our own, the places we go, the people that we're around, the contacts that we make, we need to be smart. Now, it may not affect you, it might affect me or affect someone else, I don't wanna try it out. I don't think if nobody is willing, wants to try it out. Uh, we hope that we have a good start in our schools, but, um, with what's happening in our community right now, um, I would probably say the odds are that we're gonna have some disruptions. If, if things don't calm down in our community as far as what's happening right now with this virus. But we need to, not only think about ourselves, but we need to think about each other. And that means sometime having to make sacrifices in what we do, with the places we go, the things that, that we involve ourselves in. Um, but we have to work together, we need to get schools started. We need to pray, and if you don't know how to pray, learn how to pray. And, um, and, and I hope that we all have, um, a, a, a successful school here. Uh, we're concerned about our kids, but we're concerned about our workers in a very even more way. Um, so many variables, yes, so many twists and turns, yes, so many changes. So, we just need to think about each other, do the very best that we can, hope for the very best, and, um, we'll get through it, and one day, down the road, we'll look back and we'll talk about this. But, uh, this is gonna be a trying year, and it's gonna be trying for our parents, for our community. But we're all gonna have to tighten our belt, and we're all gonna have to be responsible, responsible for ourselves, but also in so doing, be responsible to help others also. So, with that said, uh, again, thank the health department, and everybody here, um, we got still a lot of work to do, and getting ready for school start. Board meeting next Tuesday night, regular board meeting, don't forget that. And anything else? If not, do I hear a motion, the second we turn? If Agar makes the motion, this matters seconds, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye, workshop over.
Thank y'all.
We know Zed was session.
I'm sorry.